Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 26, 2016. We're here at Central High School with the senior class. And this is our 12th year that we've brought a council meeting to the high school. And we're really excited to be here today. Thank you for the sound. That sounds good. There you go. What we're going to do instead of roll call, we're going to have introductions. And I'll start and then we'll just go around the table and have folks introduce themselves. I'm John McCarthy. I'm the mayor here at Independence. My day job is I work at Lynn-Venton Community College. I raise money for scholarships, programs, buildings, and things like that. My son graduated from here at Central in 2011. Dana?
Oh, my name's Dana Fitzpatrick. And I, my day job is I'm a parish secretary at St. Patrick's Catholic Church in Independence. I graduated in 1966.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Forrest Pack. I live out at Peter Park. And my day job is I run a nonprofit that helps entrepreneurs start small businesses. And my wife is actually a graduate of Central High and Western Oregon University.
Good morning. I'm Marilyn Morton. My day job is working for Minnet. I have been on city council for 14 years and have loved every minute of it. Two graduates from Central High School and a lot of volunteer activities in town.
Good morning. I'm David Klein. I'm here as city manager. That's my day job. I have been at this for nearly six years and I've seen your group for five times now. So it's really exciting. And beyond that, a father of six and about to be a grandfather of seven.
Ms. Karen?
Oh, my name is Karen Johnson. I'm the chief reporter. I'm the elections officer and the reporting secretary for the city council. I've been doing this for almost 16 years now.
Hi, I'm Tom Kakis. My day job is I work at the Home People Rapid Deployment Center. And I too have a couple of kids that graduated from Central High School.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Lodge. I'm a retired business owner and currently on the board of Independence Downtown Association and the Ash Creek Arts Center. And I'm proud to be here today. Thank you.
Great. Also on our council but unable to be and hasn't excused absence is Jerry Hoffman, Reba's dad. Reba, you're out there somewhere. Somewhere. So Reba's dad is also. What we're going to do here is we have some invited guests that we're going to ask to speak to us this morning. Our first presenter is our state senator, Senator Jackie Winters. And she, followed by Paul Evans, are going to give us a little bit of a legislative update, things that we need to know. Senator Winters, want to welcome you officially to Independence. It's good to see you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to your council meeting this morning. And what nice bright faces out here. It's really nice to join you. You asked for somewhat of an update. I was thinking what I would share with you this morning and hopefully the update of what's coming up in the legislating 2017 session will not be a repeat of the last previous session. It was probably one of the most contentious sessions in my years of being in the legislature. By the way, my young members here, I've been, I was elected in 1998. So I've been part of the legislating process since then. And when I complete this term, I will be the longest-serving Republican African-American woman in the history of the state. But I was asked to talk about the future and not about what I see coming up in our next 2017 session. And I think that probably the biggest issue that we will be dealing with is a transportation Keeping up with current events, you will probably read soon that the speaker in the House and the Senate President will appoint a joint committee, which I hope to be on that committee, by the way, to actually begin putting together a transportation package to begin to solve some of the problems that exist. And I don't have to tell you what those problems are, including the potholes in the streets, the congestion, not only on I-5, but all over the state, as well as there's a huge for us here in Oregon. And that is the issue of how we get products and services in order to get to the market. You're a good mayor. McCarthy serves with me on regional solutions that represents Marion Pope and Yount Hill Counties. And we too are looking at the issue of can we actually have an intermodal container here in the Valley? And so hopefully, I'm hopeful that that will be a part of the discussion when we talk about transportation, not only of moving cars up and down the freeway, but what other kinds of systems do we need in Oregon? And that will include discussion about dredging, particularly when we start looking at who's paying and whether or not the port can handle everything that's occurring. Oregon is at a crossroad, I believe, of where we need to look 10, 20 years out of what our transportation system should look like. That, I think, will be a huge discussion of this session. The transportation package will probably devote its discussion to whether how much we're going to increase fees, whether those will take the place of gasoline tax, a combination of taxes, of fees, and reoperation. And of course, a part of that will, what we do about low carbon fuel. So that's what I see as the big discussion. Not to also, as you know, our reason for being in the legislature is to balance the budget. I serve on Ways and Means, have since 99. And that means to make certain that the young people have dollars in order to go to school. Some of us believe that we don't actually fund enough to make certain that our education dollars are more than adequate in order to serve the needs of our young people. Some of us would like to see a lot more invested in education than what's currently being invested today. So those are some of the two major, I think, issues that we will be dealing with. And if you have any questions out of your team, but I really appreciate your inviting me this morning.
Council members, does anybody have any questions they want to ask Senator Winters at this moment? I know that Senator, you've been very easy to get hold of. I know that I'm in your office frequently in Salem. And so thank you for being so.
Thank you. That was darkness.
So Senator, thank you very much for taking the time to come and visit us today. And thank you for your years of service to all of us here in our community and throughout the Land of Valley.
Well, you're quite welcome. And I, you know, I don't know if you're the only city that is doing and having your senior class or your class of students to be a part of your council. And I think it's commendable on your part because you are the future. And hopefully, we will have some of the young people there that will actually do the same as you're doing now, serving our cities and our states, because that's what makes everything viable and make them go. Oregon is, and I just have to put a plug in for us, we're volunteers. Your city council members are volunteers, most of your legislators are volunteers. We really pride ourselves on being a citizen-involved state. And so I encourage you, young people, to look at either having a career or volunteering. Not only, I have students come to my office as interns. You learn a lot about what goes on with your government. So thank you for inviting me this morning and thank you for including the students you might need to.
Thank you, Senator. Let's give her a one. I'd like to invite to the podium our state representative in the House, the Oregon House of Representatives, Paul Evans. Good morning. So I understand that when it goes dark, I'm done. All right. Thank you very much for inviting me. This is my second time, I think, to this forum. For the students, as I understand, you're seniors. That still means that you're either going to be 18 or going to be 18 in the fall sometime. Is that right? So most of you are registered to vote. This is your first big election. What I want to cover today is really just two or three things having to do with what happened in the past legislature and moving forward. I want to start with elections because ultimately, you will be taking part in one of the biggest elections of your lifetime. And I don't mean the lifetime to now. I mean the lifetime, probably near 60 or so, you'll be looking back going, 2016 was what? I did what? I say that because I graduated from Central High School in 1988. Somebody will have to take their shoes off in order to count the number of days in the years that I was bid. But 1988, the year was Dukakis versus George Herbert Walker Bush. And I look back and say, my gosh, that was a long time ago, but it really, in a lot of ways, was. This election, you're going to be selecting your state representatives, you're going to be selecting the governor, you're going to be selecting a senator, and you're going to be selecting a president for the first time. What that means for you is not only are the issues that are going on in the legislature something that you should be aware of, but you actually have the opportunity to have input in them, which means that you have the responsibility and the opportunity to ask people what direction they want to take the state. This past legislative session, as the senator talked about, was certainly frustrating. One of the best ways to describe it I can think of is in about 1857, Abraham Lincoln, you might remember, he lost a lot of elections before he became president. He lost a senate race. And when asked by his best friend how he was feeling about that, he said, well, you know, I feel like the old fellow who stubbed his toe. It hurt too bad to laugh, I'm just too old to cry. I say that because that's what that last 32-day session was. We got some good things passed, but it was not a pretty process. And it really set the table for 2017. As Senator Winters talked about, transportation is certainly going to be one of the big issues coming up. I also happen to think reform of some of our government agencies is going to be on the table, something called PERS. I'm not sure everybody in the building knows a whole lot about PERS is the public employee retirement system. We've got to figure out how to do that so that we make sure that public employees get the retirement that they are entitled to, and at the same time, we adjust to a changing world. And I also think we're probably going to be discussing how to help small businesses afford the minimum wage. And the minimum wage, as you might remember, we just put into place a new strategy in Oregon, a three-tiered minimum wage that effectively begins July 1st. For cities and counties and local governments, I know that is also at the top of your mind because those are adding costs. And we're trying to figure out ways to make sure that we are not strangling the juice that's laid in the golden egg. Those things are coming up. There's also something that I was very fortunate to be able to play at least a small role in. This fall, you'll be able to vote on something that's a constitutional amendment for the Constitution, to set aside 1.5% of lottery revenues for veteran services and average. You think for a minute, state really doesn't necessarily have all those veterans. And yet, federal government, it might be reading from time to time, is really not taking care of the vets as much as it could be. And we're still at war. In fact, some of you may be joining the military after graduation. One of the hallmarks of the American contract has always been that the folks who send to war will try to take care of them. And as a legislator, if the federal government won't do their part, maybe we at the state will can do something to leverage our resources to make sure that they do. That will be in your very thick book for the election coming up in November. In terms of other issues for the state, I think it's going to range pretty much across the board, trying to help local governments adjust to the economic realities of the global market. And I also think at some point, depending on who wins the presidency, we're going to be looking at some of the pass-through funding from the federal government. I think there's a recognized need in transportation plus plenty of dollars are needed for development. I just don't know how that's going to go. So that's really the report I have right now to the council, to the seniors here. I hope that you ask me questions. I hope that you recognize that sooner than you believe, you'll actually be making the decisions that affect you and your children at some point. And I just appreciate you being here today and letting me be a part. Council members, does anybody have any questions of Representative Evans that want to ask at this point? I want to thank you all for, Representative Evans is, he was also the mayor of Monmouth. And he's a retired major in the United States Air Force. He's spent 20 years there. And so I really appreciate the time you've spent with me personally and here in our community on a variety of different issues over a number of years. And I really appreciate you taking the time to come and visit with us today. Appreciate it. Let's give him one. Our next presentation this morning is from Patty Nebue from the Allen Kern of Maine.
Hello. Thank you. First off, I just want to ask a quick question. How many of you know where the food bank is? And how many of you have ever helped with food drive? Great. Thank you. Well, I'm here to say thank you because I have been lucky enough to have helped with the food bank here for the last several months. And I see how much the food makes a difference in the lives of people that are neighbors. The food bank has been in existence for 40 years. And do you remember the restaurant Casa Tequila when, as you're going out of town? That is now where the food bank is. And it's a very busy place, and we welcome volunteers. So as you're getting ready to go out and continue your education, I'm just suggesting, think about it. Go on Facebook and take a look and see if you're interested in messages on Facebook, and we can get you some information back. So 40 years is a long time. And when they said I was going to talk, I got a little bit nervous. And I thought, why am I nervous? And I will tell you, when I came on the food bank, I had come to replace two very important people. One lady had been there helping for 30 years, and one man had been there for 15. And they were leaving very big shoes to fill. So I came in with an idea of how I could help, and I thought I knew the food bank very well. And I learned a lot because, one, it's not just one box of food. When people come there, first off, it's confidential. It's a hard thing to do to come to a food bank because times are tough. So when they come, we try to be welcoming. And when they walk in, besides food, we have racks of clothing. Some of you may have even donated some. And they get to select some food items, or excuse me, some clothing items for free. And there's also books. And then, we're lucky enough to have tons of fresh produce. So it's not just canned things, which are very important, but there's apples, and there's oranges, and there's potatoes, and carrots, and onions, and squash, lots of very healthy things. And the people that come are really interested in having very healthy food choices. We even have a man that comes once a month. He's called the Food Hero. Maybe you've had him come to your schools. And he comes and selects food items from what we have, and he'll make sample items and come the next day, give them out, and share recipes so people can actually use the food and make different types of food choices at home and different recipes for their families. So then, after the produce, they go to another area and they get dairy, meat, and frozen foods. And again, lots of healthy choices there. And they go to another area, and then they go through, and they get to pick out all the things that they would like. And it's soups, it's prepared meals, it's breads, canned vegetables, canned fruits, the list goes on and on and on. They even have soaps, laundry soaps, and very importantly, sometimes toilet paper. So they get to make all these choices. So it's not what people are giving necessarily in a box to them, it's what their choices are for their entire family. Amazingly, in the few months that I've been there, I keep statistics that I turn in because we're a partner with the Marion Pope Food Share. And by, at this point in April, since the first of the year, we've had 615 people come visit the food bank. And that translates into about 2,300 people receiving food. It's a lot of people, and it's a lot of our neighbors. You know, we serve long with Independence, but we don't turn people away. They come a lot of times once a month. Sometimes people have to come twice a month. And it's not just one, I guess, type of individual in our population. It's young people, it's seniors, it's married people, injured people, people that have disabilities, people that have got injured on the job. And what's really heartwarming, a lot of these people, when they can, they come to give back. Some people volunteer, some people make donations themselves. A lot of people donate in our community. I mentioned Marion Pope Food Share. Western Oregon University is a huge donating group. In fact, they won an award recently for the best college food drive in the state. Scouts, rods, churches, libraries, schools, airport people. And then there's an organization called Green Bags. Say they have a green bag in their house? Yeah, green bags. People will have thank you for that. People have green bags to hold their grocery bags, and they fill them up during the course of a couple of months. And volunteers go around and pick them up, and they come and they distribute it to our pantry. And last month, they brought 2,500 pounds of food. So I just want to say thank you. It's a great organization. We love having volunteers. We thank you for all the things you do. And if you care of a food drive, please give because it's really helping all the people in our community. Thank you.
Yes, I have, I have something I just wanted to say to Patty. Sorry. Let me, I'm going to do a duffing. Patty, this is a surprise to Patty. I do?
Yes.
That's the news. Okay, Mike, he said I need an iPhone. Here we go. This is a surprise to Patty and to her esteemed husband and to everybody on the council. But this is a Good Neighbor Award presented to Patty Nebue at the request of Police Chief Mason. During recent police activity, I'm sure many of you know about the event. Patty made herself available to assist the police department by sitting with young crime victims overnight. Patty was thoughtful, caring, and sensitive. Her willingness to be available to come to the aid of others helped not only the police department in accomplishing our function, but also the vulnerable victims in this case. For these reasons, it's my honor to present this Good Neighbor Award to Patty. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you very much. This is, this means a lot to me. And I just want to say, Patty, I think we should be really honored to have such a brave police force in our community. They did a wonderful job when I got to see it firsthand. So thank you very much. Thank you.
You surprised me.
No. It was a surprise to everybody. You all are surprised, right? Yep. And the mayor, it was not hard, but sometimes you need to be surprised.
Thank you.
A bit surprised. And thank you, Patty, again.
Council members, I was approached by Mayor Oberst over at Monmouth to ask to have a wee bit of a discussion with this council about WIMPAG. And Mr. Klein, are you prepared to make a couple of comments about what the request was and what the concept of question is in front of us?
Yeah, I, so just a little bit of a reminder, WIMPAG, Western Independence, Monmouth, Public Education Pay Government Channel. It's our, it's our public access channel on, available on.
Dead.
Available, okay. Available on Minnet. I don't know if any of our Minnet's competition carries the signal, but at least on Minnet. You can tune in certainly on the various city council meetings and many other choices. At its inception, when the three entities, Western Independence and Monmouth, put it together, they put it together by way of an agreement, an intergovernmental agreement, that ultimately envisioned the channel would become its own 501(c)(3) or nonprofit organization. They have worked for years to provide content, to provide that channel. I believe they're off into the YouTube world as well. So I think there's a lot of access for public information. I think to better their mission, they are moving ahead with trying to create the 501(c)(3). We've seen a draft of an agreement that both our city and Monmouth have. And what I'm looking for from the council today really is approval to begin reviewing that agreement with our legal and coming to you with an action item at a future meeting.
Council members, this is, we're not making final approval, but we're making sure that this is the direction that everybody wants to go and that it makes good sense. And I wanted to bring it, you know, as Mayor Oberst requested, I bring this in front of the council to see if it was, that was okay with folks. Does that seem like a reasonable kind of thing in the comments?
Yes. I've served on the WIMPAG board before, and I've read through the IGA several times. I do know that the intent from the beginning was to turn WIMPAG into a 501(c)(3). And in fact, the IGA says, as soon as possible, this will be done. This is a little, a little past the as soon as, but it seems to be done. And if you want to do this by consensus or by motion, I'd happy to lead you to one.
I think what we're looking for is at this point is to make sure, I think this is a sense of the council so that staff can go ahead and do the legal stuff and make sure that the lawyers are all happy with the hoops. And I think we'll, Mr. Klein, we'll get the official later on, but this is conceptual.
I'm good with that. I have my direction.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Everybody all right? Great. Okay. Thank you. Making some.
Shall be so.
Okay. And the only thing I have under my report today, because we're going to have an extensive staff report on a number of issues, just want to remind everybody the Budget Committee meeting tomorrow and at 6 o'clock. So I'm not, I'm able, not able to be there, but Council President Lodge will help get us elected a Budget Committee Chair and do good stuff. Okay. Mr. Klein, I'm going to turn it over to you for your staff reports. I think I'll do this from here. So we have a bit of a presentation. We have two items that I want to cover, and then we have a number of other items that our staff want to cover. So I'm going to talk to you about Independence Landing and the marijuana tax. For those of you who are not familiar with Independence Landing, that is in fact the new name for the former Valley Concrete Site, the site that you're going to pull up on the map for me right now. So if you, you can't see it very well behind you, but you've seen this before. This is, comes from the 2009, 2020 Vision Plan. And this is one of the planning documents that has further highlighted the community's vision to redevelop that site into something that fits with, within, fits better within the community in terms of the commercial downtown floor, the parks, the river, and the like. This, this plan, this, and if you're looking on this behind you for the folk in the audience, that would be the property that is in Greener, that's closest to the river, and it is some 28 years. That property has been in production as a concrete, as a mixing site and a gravel mining operation for well over 100 years. When we bought the property, we found a railroad lease that was written, that had been executed for 99 years. That lease had passed its entire life cycle. And so that gives you an idea how long that property's in production in an industrial and mining operation. First appeared, as far as we know, in one of the city documents in 1996 in our Hart's Masquerade. So that, that's been a part of the city's vision to change, to bring that property into a more consistent use with the downtown for the, you know, at least for the last 20 years. Where we are today, the city bought that property in 2014. We have been working that property, gardening.
We have been, uh, working that property garden, it looks like, for me. This in fact is a war, it is a current vision or a, a vision that we, well, actually this is a current vision of the property. This is a vision that has been prepared by our developer. Uh, make sure I get that right. Yep. Uh, not so much. So that, that actually is a vision that we prepared. It's part of our, uh, our work in two thousand fourteen with the state's help. The current vision looks a little bit different from this, but not much. And what you're seeing on that property is, again, the river's on the bottom, you can see it, you can see, uh, parkland and, and trail connection. That trail connection is going to be part of a two-and-a-half mile long riverfront trail. Uh, the city controls and owns all that property in a way, one fashion or another. Um, and then adjacent to that trail is the actual development. And the development will include, uh, we're, we're visiting at this point in time about a seventy-five to eighty-day hotel, a number of residential properties, a new restaurant along the river and some more commercial development. So this is ongoing. Uh, the city has done a lot of work since buying that property. We spent, uh, as you, many of you probably saw, if you were down there, you saw the work being done on the site. Uh, we have since engaged a developer to make this vision come to pass. And we are working through the details of that vision right now with the developer. Uh, this, there will be a partnership. We will, uh, we will be sharing the cost of this because we want it to look in a certain fashion. So that's, all that work is ongoing. Um, if there's anything particularly new, we've begun, this is a little bit more in the details of what we're doing right now, but part of, uh, the property need is to change it from industrial zoning to some zoning that fits our future vision. We are, to do that, we have to do a transportation study to see what the impacts of traffic would be on the site. And so we have commissioned that work and that's underway. So you, hopefully we'll see that work completed in the not too far future. And then we will come to you with a zoning amendment that incorporates that, that, that vision and also talks about the kinds of transportation improvements that we need of any to make that work. So that's where we stand today. I don't know if you have questions. There's a lot of work. We meet on this every week, first day every week. We engage on it, on, on the internet constantly. And there's a lot of work being done on this project. Keep rolling, we're, okay. We appreciate it because, uh, times, times are the essence. So next up, I want to talk to you a little bit about marijuana tax. You have that coming before you. We've, uh, when the, uh, when the, when the state passed, initially passed its, uh, recreational marijuana, legalization of recreational marijuana. In anticipation of that, the city council at the time had passed an ordinance that allowed for the taxation strictly of recreational marijuana. Since that time, the state has, uh, passed its own law to modify and flesh out the language of the, of the initiative from the voters. Part of that writing was to pretty clearly preempt the city from being able to levy its own tax under the prior framework. So meaning that the, meaning that the ordinance that we passed previously really is not, we can't effectually collect tax on that property, on that pond of marijuana. What that new law did create though, was an opportunity to pass a, referred to the voters, uh, in November, uh, a, a tax up to three percent of sales, retail sales of marijuana, recreational marijuana, or, yeah, recreational marijuana, uh, in the state, in the city. So we have been pursuing that. We will be coming to you. We have a timing, we have a, an elections calendar that would, uh, anticipate that. Uh, the city corridor will provide that to you shortly. It has optional ways of going forward. Um, this, this, this tax is supplemental to what the tax of the state collects. The state currently collects, I believe, seventeen percent on the, on the, uh, production, on various aspects of the production of marijuana. And ten percent of the, of the net of that tax will go to the cities on some kind of for now per capita basis. After July, it will be distributed to the city based on licenses within the city. So there's a number of, there's, there's a number of different kinds of licenses for the, for the development of marijuana. But regardless, again, without diving into weeds, the, uh, it's, the amount of that, those proceeds are tied to what is going on in the community. Um, understand, one thing, I understand that there's been, that there may have been some conversation about, uh, moving away from the legalization of marijuana in, in our community that's also enabled by the, by the ordinance, just, just consequentially from that. To do so would, would in fact deprive the city of revenues, not only from the proposed three percent, but from also from state share revenues. And those are revenues that go to, uh, public safety needs in the city. So regardless of what happens in the future with us, existing operations would, would continue in, in service, but any tax from those would not be collectible or distributed to the cities. That's my understanding of the law. So, uh, those questions are always up, they may come before you, but just so you understand that. Um, I think that's all I have really on this. So the only other thing I wanted to say is, you know, when I was at everybody's age in the audience here, I always felt a little less than empowered. And the best, best way to get empowered, in my opinion, is to vote this, uh, these two times that you have in front of you. So thank you.
No, that's fun, getting into the weeds.
We'll have a few mistakes. Uh, council members, Laura Gutz has, uh, provided a finance report in, uh, your council pocket. Uh, she, uh, is, for me, she has nothing else to add. That's why she's listed as one minute. And, uh, there's, uh, if you have questions, you can, uh, visit with her afterwards. And, uh, the short line is on time, on target. So that's where we're going to go. Uh, Chief Mason, I think, uh, that you're up for several items. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm going to start off this morning with a, uh, one of the more enjoyable aspects of my job, getting to give an award to someone. Trevor Berry, are you in the audience? Could you come up? Mr. Mayor, can I get you to assist me? As many of you may have seen in the newspaper recently, um, one of your fellow students here at Central High School helped save a life. On April third, Trevor Berry heard some screaming coming from across the street where he was working. Trevor went towards the screaming and he found a man unconscious that needed CPR. Trevor performed that CPR until relieved by Police Officer Nick Rumsey. The man lived. Nick Rumsey subsequently, uh, requested an award, go forth to Trevor. And it's his honor to say today that, uh, we're glad to give a lifesaving award to Trevor Berry. So when you're sitting in Mr. Arnold's health class, which you already found, remember that could be you getting false service at any time. And, uh, being willing to respond is what makes the difference. Not everyone goes towards screaming, but, uh, you know, take a little bit of caution in that, I guess. But those that do find medical necessity certainly are very proud of Trevor for reacting. Second thing I want to talk about today is a, uh, kind of a tag on to the last map. I didn't bring my own visual aid, I apologize for that. But when we talked about the downtown, uh, trail, and you saw that trail that was along the river in that slide, um, we're talking about, uh, continuation of that trail in my, uh, next topic. The city was awarded a grant, uh, to construct some obstacles that will go along a mile-and-a-half section of the fitness trail that is located, uh, down by the new ball field, boat ramp area on Deanne Drive. Everyone familiar with where I'm at here? Deanne Drive, Ball Park, Boat Ramp, and also Dog Park, I will say. So it's going to start and end at the Dog Park and it's going to go all the way down and around the Boat Ramp area and the Soccer Field and return back to the Dog Park where it ends. The, uh, neat part for us is that, uh, this grant allowed for the construction of obstacles to go along that trail. It's a soft surface running trail. Uh, and by obstacles, I'm talking about, uh, things like tire flips, wall vaults, rope climbs, kind of thing warrior dash or spark race type events. Not required to go along the trail, it'll be optional. You can take part in those obstacles as you run the trail or you could just run the trail. The grant funding that we got doesn't fully pay for the need. A lot of it is being accomplished through community donations and sponsorship of money, materials, and labor. That's why I'm reaching out to all of you today. If you think this sounds like a neat project and you'd like to take a part in, uh, we would encourage that involvement. We had a work party this last Saturday and some things got accomplished, but we're nowhere near completion. A lot of holes have been dug and posts in those holes, but they're not set yet in concrete. Once that's done, we then have building to go along with many of the obstacles. Uh, a lot of really good, uh, commercial quality, um, pieces, I guess, were purchased to, uh, make sure that it's all safe. And, uh, our insurance carrier is a little happier about that instead of us going out there with the wood shop and making our own design. These are things that have been vetted and have some, uh, some backing. So I can't give you an actual date of the next work session, but I can tell you that it's going to probably be over this weekend. And then in the following couple of weeks, I will make sure that the, uh, information about when the next work parties are is posted on the city's website. So if you check in there, we'll put it on a front banner so that you can see when that's going to take place. And we would encourage all of your participation, uh, for any amount of time that we're willing to give down there. And the last thing that I would like to talk about today is, uh, really for just the students here and to, uh, maybe give a little bit of encouragement. Last year at this same meeting, one of your, uh, last year's seniors, Tom Peterson, addressed the council during the time where you are going to be giving, given an opportunity to speak later and came up with a question for us, the council and the city, about the curfew laws and why they're different in Monmouth and Independence. Uh, Mr. Peterson explained that it's really complicated for a young person to stay within the parameters of the curfew laws when those laws change between the skate park and Circle Head. So we, uh, were commissioned to look into that further. Uh, the two police chiefs, Chief Kaplan and I, spent some time researching them and we ended up coming up with one curfew law that is now in place and has been enacted into an ordinance by this council so that there is no confusion, uh, between the two cities. The law's the same, the times are the same, there's no getting caught up because there's a small difference between the two rules. I would just like to point out that that kind of difference can be made here today. If you have an idea or you're thinking about saying something, don't hold back. Come up and, uh, and take the time and the, the effort to make your, your idea known. And perhaps next year we'll talk about something that, uh, you prompted in a different city. So that was my report.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Uh, we're setting, uh, are in charge of our community services, the, uh, library and, uh, museum. And, uh, she has a brief report for us today, followed by Jason Hissman.
I hate following the chief. I always have to. Well, I have things from both the museum and from the library for you today. The building that houses the Heritage Museum was built in eighteen eighty-eight. They have a brand new addition that was built in nineteen nineteen. Right now, there are lots of stairs between the different, the three levels of the museum. And so I'm, I'm excited that in this next year, we're going to be working on grant writing and fundraising to add a lift at the museum, new restrooms, and a small annex, um, which will take care of some of our bigger artifacts. Right now, we have a huge covered wagon in the middle of the building. And that would move the annex along with our other covered wagon, which is in storage. That one's actually built on the eighteen hundreds base, so it is, it truly is historic. The one in the museum was built in nineteen fifty-nine on a work in Capri. We also have photo collection of hundreds of early Independence photographs. So if you're interested in Independence history, looking at the past of this area, it's a great place to visit and do research. There's also a new digital interactive book coming out soon that you can use to explore that Independence history. If any of you are interested in being involved in that fundraising, get ahold of me. You can find me in the library, Dr. Peggy, in the museum. Also, the library, um, we're going to be starting a new planning process this upcoming year. Uh, we're currently on year four of our five-year plan, so it's time to start working on the next five to ten years. We just want to hear from you, okay? You're the people that will be using these facilities in the fall, in upcoming years. So there'll be a lot of surveying going on this fall. Please be sure to participate in those. If you're going to save this area, if we want to hear from you, it will help us prioritize our collections, our programs, and our facilities over the next five to ten years. I also wanted to take us, um, just a minute to make sure that all of you are aware of some of our online, um, resources that you can, you can get to with your library card. As you could head off for college, many of you, um, things like peer-reviewed periodical articles are going to become very important in your life. And you can't find those just doing a Google search. If you go into our website with your library card, you can get to those resources easily. Hopefully your study habits are better than mine and you're not going in at two in the morning, but you can. So there are lots of databases, periodical artists, articles, some of them you have access to right now through the high school, but you'll lose that access coming up. Uh, we also have some additional things like Chilton's Online, Mango Languages, and Learning Express, which has many, many practice exams for things like the SAT or AP exams. I know many of you have already done those things. Share that information with your friends who are juniors. It also has some information on doing resumes, job search. And for fun, we also have access to free eBooks, downloadable audio. If you are more like me and you're doing it at two in the morning and you don't have a library card, you can apply online and then just come in and follow up later. So you can get that instant access when you need it. Okay? Thank you.
That's right. People applaud each other for activity. This is fun. Uh, Mr. Kessler, you're going to talk to us a little bit about Independence Works.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Team manager for Independence. Thanks. So I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about IndieWorks. And I don't know how many of you have one of these out there, smartphone? Lots of people. So after this, I want you to pull it out, go into the app store and search for IndieWorks. It's our city app. And IndieWorks lets you do all sorts of things, uh, request services from the city. You can actually follow them as they get completed, as well as information on the city. Actually, uh, give me a second, I'll play a quick video for you.
Tech people always have videos.
You can do it on the website, uh, we do have a link up there that if you click IndieWorks, uh, it'll link you to the video. Um, so I want to say a couple of things about it. Really, it's a citizen engagement platform. So if you see something happening in your community, such as graffiti, a pothole, something like that, uh, you can snap a picture of it with your cell phone, it submits it to the correct staff, and it actually kind of creates a dialogue between the staff and the citizen. So you're going to get updates as, you know, they start work on it, they complete work on it, you'll know that it's actually been done. Uh, so it creates a real new level of transparency that we haven't seen before. Um, we just launched it a couple of months ago, um, just kind of some information on it. We've had almost fifty requests submitted by citizens for issues ranging from potholes to graffiti to safety concerns to general questions. Uh, over two hundred people have installed the app on their smartphone. Um, and that, we call this an app, but it's not just for people who have smartphones. Uh, you can also access it directly through our website, um, through our main phone number or, uh, the front desk there at City Hall. There's all ways to get access to it. Anyways, um, it's a great way to access city services, so I do encourage you to check it out. Thank you very much. You too.
I want to start our, our economic development director to come forward and, uh, and to preface to him is that Independence for a long time has really taken a proactive approach to economic development, to generating the jobs that we need in our community. We are not a bedroom community. We are a, we wanna be a full-service community that's doing lots of exciting things. I think that through the work of staff, council, and a number of volunteers, there's been lots of exciting things that have happened in the past number of years and we're continuing to move forward on that. And it's one of the reasons we won an All-American City Award. I wanna publicly thank Shad Erwin for his work and all the staff that have done so much to help us all. And council members, you're part of that too. So I just wanna, it's kind of a big hug. Anyway, Erwin, why don't you take it from here?
So, yeah, the mayor said the hard goal is really to create a well-rounded community. We don't wanna be a bedroom community. We want to be a place to live, work, and play. And so to that end, when we talk about economic development, a lot of it is involved with revitalizing the downtown, enhancing our parks, working to really get citizens engaged in the community because a vibrant community is really appealing for, you know, for larger businesses. And really working also on helping startups and supporting smaller businesses in town too. Because if you really kinda work on that foundation, we believe that it would appeal to larger employers. And it's really, it's working if you're looking around. You know, the downtown looks very different than it did 10 years ago, even five years ago. We've seen that improvement turn into larger businesses here. All of our large employers are hiring right now. Some of them are in record-high employment levels. Marquis Spa recently completed a big expansion. Universal Seed came into town with a big expansion. And last year, FCR, which is the contact center over in Central Plaza, they opened up. They were starting with projecting 100 jobs. They're over 100 new jobs now and they're still looking to hire people. So that's really created a good momentum here within the community. And it's a good range of jobs in terms of pay and pay and skills required as well. You know, getting back to Independence Landing, which as the city manager mentioned, that's gonna be something we really believe that helps take our community and our region up another level. You know, the hotel, there'll be a lot of new visitors to town. That's a lot of new potential business for area businesses. I think we're seeing that with some additional redevelopment in the downtown area. The Cooper Building, the Tower downtown, you've probably seen that renovation. It's essentially complete now, they're now leasing it out. The Cooper Bank Building, which is kind of opposite across Main Street from the Cooper Building, that is being renovated right now. There's a tenant will be opening up in June. And actually, I can also say that as of yesterday, the Taylor's Building on the corner of Main and Monmouth Street has sold. There was a new local owner who was gonna be here and see some people out there. Starting to work on it very soon. He doesn't have a tenant fully lined up, but he's actually talking to a couple of good folks. And so that building, which has been vacant for a long, long time, is hopefully gonna be coming back to life here as well. So it's really a good sequence of events that's going on. But we're also really working to try to stay ahead of the game here. You know, the economy's changing, technology is becoming a huge factor in the world and we're trying to make sure that we stay on the right side of that. We've got INET, the Fiber Broadband System. That's a great, it's a great asset to help us keep that edge and we're also trying to stay, to leverage that, to make use of it. So we've been working with partners in the technology industry to become a living laboratory for developing relevant technologies. Some of you may have heard of the Internet of Things. It's this idea of connected devices through the cloud, through the internet. We're trying to become a place where these companies come and test and develop these products. We've found a niche with agricultural technologies. There's a big market out there, but as we talk to the tech industry, they keep saying, you know, we want to exploit this market, but we don't know any farmers. And we're a small rural community, we know lots of farmers. So we set ourselves up as sort of an interface between the tech industry and the ag industry to make connections, find test sites, and get development going on these technologies. These are things like irrigation systems that are linked with soil moisture meters so that it turns itself on and off as it is, so it don't use as much water as is really necessary to get the proper amount of irrigation. Linked weather systems so that people in dispersed locations can know what's coming in terms of the weather. Even something simple as one guy was saying, you know, if I could look at my phone every morning and have 10 fields scattered across two counties, I knew what the dew point was in each one of those fields. And you know, in the morning, I can plan my day because I make hay on those fields based on the dew point. That's a solvable problem. And that could also turn into data analytics for some of the tech companies. They can, even after a few years of information, give you two days ahead of time saying, based on the current weather condition, we expect you're gonna want to go here first and then there, and really enhance efficiency. So that's been a, we're really spinning that up. It's becoming an interest, we're making a name for ourselves in that way. But we're trying to take a look at the other side as well and say, okay, it's great to have outside people coming here. We want folks like you all to have these skills and really be able to take advantage of this as well. So we're working with folks like Intel, Verizon Technology Association of Oregon, trying to incorporate technology, innovation, and these kind of concepts into the school system. Because ultimately, what we wanna happen is you all graduate from high school with this idea and fall right into this established business ecosystem where you've got the mentorship and the support and the opportunity to develop that business right here in town. So that's really kind of in a nutshell where we're going. There's a lot of exciting things happening. A lot of folks that you don't normally see giving around small towns like this or coming to town and they really like what they see. So hopefully, we'll get more of that in the future.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Patton from INET and Councilor Martin's gonna assist you with clicking that technology. Council members, I just noticed in the Statesman this morning that Cooper Building has won an award. It was in the Statesman this morning, won the Historic Preservation Focus. That Cooper Building is longer in downtown and it's had to turn on top and it's one that, it had some challenges internally and the renovation has taken place and we have a beautiful place on the outside. Good morning, Mr. Patton, and welcome to the council.
Good morning. I'm the Phoenix Mayor, the Phoenix City Council, and I'm your central high school student. You know, each year, I look forward to this opportunity to speak directly to you, the future of our two beautiful cities. But first, INET gives a regular report to both city councils. I delivered this report to the Monmouth City Council last week. We hear a few highlights. As it relates to businesses in our communities, I'm pleased to report that most of the businesses in the two cities, and when I say most, the exact number is 84.5% of them are INET subscribers. In addition to street or brick-and-mortar businesses, there are many more businesses that are not so visible. In our community, there are 398 district addresses that are home-based businesses, some more than one. You can ask me how many I have, four. There are over 500 currently registered home businesses in our communities. Once again, most of them, 74.1% of them, are INET subscribers. INET is participating in a home-based small business fair in May. We want to give every assistance to local businesses and those operated from their homes are important and numerous as well. I've delivered these facts and figures to the council, be it parent, children have received them. Now let's talk about something equally important and that's you. You, the future of the two cities and perhaps INET's role in it. Seniors in the room, you are the 11th graduating class since the beginning of INET. Including you, 11 generations of youth seniors who probably never had listened to this. Well, what you're supposed to hear is a bonus. If you know, if people have ever heard that, and that's the sound that we heard about in the days of childhood. Running at a maximum speed of 56K. Chances are, you've never heard that sound or ever had to experience 56K as a speed. Some of us actually remember being able to play one or more games of computer solitaire while we were waiting to, for a single left page to load. I wanna take you back to second grade. When you were little in the second grade, George Bush was the president, Dick Cheney was vice president. Superman Returns, Borat was popular, and the 300 was really cutting-edge filmmaking as it relates to movies. Tecumseh, PlayStation 3, Nintendo Wii, which I still have one of, were the hot toys. And in Monmouth and Independence, INET started providing high-speed data. Why is INET? Why did INET come into existence? Because Monmouth and Independence wanted what they didn't have and couldn't get from anywhere else, and that's high-speed data. With the good Oregon attitude and with the twist of Monmouth Independence determination, we decided to build what we wanted for ourselves. Before the doors could even be opened, our cities had to fight. We had to fight hard to keep what they had built. INET was attacked by bigger businesses with sneaky politics, but Monmouth and Independence were the winners. So thank your parents, thank your neighbors, they did very good. As you can see from the beginning, we've increased our basic speed a number of times. In very beginning, we were offering 2 megabits per minute. That is the most common use today. It's 30 and very shortly I would suspect it's going to be 75. Why? Because basic data usage has gone up. INET keeps Facebook, your needs. All the data usage today has been on Netflix and YouTube. And there's a chart indicating some of the various uses of INET as they seem to be today. The internet of everything, it's not just the internet of things, it's the internet of everything. Connecting the unconnected. And quite frankly, by the year 2020, 37 billion new things will be connected that aren't connected today to the internet, including cows. Do we have it good here in Monmouth and Independence? Yes, we do. But I often question if we really understand how good we do have it. In the United States, there are a little bit over 19,000 cities. Of those, 27 of the 19,000-plus cities have high-speed fiber optic data delivered directly to their homes and businesses. 27 out of 19,000. That's a teeny, tiny little sliver, or 0.14%. I don't know if you can see it or not, but that's what it looks like on a chart. That's what we have here. The rest of the country says INET is a really big thing and it really is. It's your star, it's your really big thing. Monmouth and Independence are heroes for generating, creating INET. We already have, so many other cities want and want desperately. So what kind of life changes could happen because of broadband and fiber and high speed? High speed truly gives us all, especially you, access to the world. Monmouth and Independence can be competitive on a global level. Teleshipping has suddenly become easy. Work digitally in financial, educational, healthcare, and industrial centers of the world. Enjoy, be able to continue to enjoy the beautiful benefits that our two cities make available to us and the lower cost of living and all of the beautiful Oregon outdoors. We at INET just wanted you to know what you have. What we all, together, built and will carry us forward into the century with style. Independence, Monmouth are with and at INET are ready to embrace the internet of everything. Progress, innovation, and now travel at the speed of light. INET can and will deliver speed for you. When you leave Monmouth and Independence, you may be disappointed, even shocked, at how slow other internets how react. Out-of-town friends who know about INET come here to do their downloading, which was measured in minutes instead of hours or days. More and more, living and working decisions are influenced solely by data. Yours will be too. You are the future. Today's generation is ahead of you, make decisions. Tomorrow, you call the shots, all of them. INET is the future too. INET will be guided by your generation. The bosses will look very, very close tomorrow. INET is proud of all the hard work you've done to get yourself to this point. You're nearly graduated. You'll be heading out into the world with a special edge because of what your parents in these two cities have put together, INET. Congratulations on being almost graduated. We're glad INET could help. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, are there? Thank you, appreciate the report, thank you. Okay. You've been listening to us and as we've been providing information out, this is the kind of information that we use to make decisions. Sometimes, there's a lot of it and today, we gave you a big dose of a lot of things because we know we have lots of questions that people have, and how we're finding out. But what we wanna hear from now is you folks. And so, the question before you, what's your vision of independence in the next 10 years? And I know some of you have thought about that. So what I'd like you to do is, there's a roving microphone. Mr. Volster has it. And we're, when you stand up, give us your name and where you live. You know, Independence, Monmouth, or out in the country. And share with us what you'd like us to know and we keep track of that. So, who's gonna be the first brave soul to have something to say? Somebody come up, otherwise I'll go ahead and call you out. Who has a vision for what they'd like our community to look like in 10 years? Is that a hand you're meeting? Does anybody have an opinion? There you go, okay. Stand up, let us know who you are and what you'd like to share. Good morning.
Alright, so my name is John Lesmeyer. I live out in the country, outside of Independence. So, one of the things that, it's not necessarily like a vision for the town so much as I'm worried and I think a lot of people that are out in our situation, especially being grass seed farmers, are worried about the urban development impacting our farms. We've had farmers like Blue Heron come in, which are big farmers, come in and take over a lot of the land out there. So they just recently moved in and removed a lot of the, there's a forest on Towne Road that they came in and basically just bulldozed. So, they're destroying a lot of farmland or a lot of habitat land out there to make room for farm, you know, flat farming land. And so I think a lot of farmers out there are really concerned about losing our farmland because that's, a lot of people make all their money, especially during the summertime on that. So, the zoning laws have kept a lot of the urban development from moving out to where we all live and where we all work. But I think a lot of us are increasingly more and more concerned about that.
Do you know what they're planning to do with the land out there?
They're just, well, right now, Blue Heron's, they're all farming strawberries out there, but...
They're gonna do what?
They're farming strawberries.
Okay.
So, a lot of us, you know, front grasses, a lot of small farmers. You've got people that operate their own farms, not necessarily like contracted with other people, but do it just locally. They are in risk of losing a lot of their land to urban development and other larger farmers that aren't, you know, don't have that same small business. Give it back to the community, interest the party.
Thank you. While we don't control the area out there, I will let you know that the, I know Sean Erwin, our economic development person's been working with some of the Whalingan folks. But there's been a lot of folks coming in from Southern California and out from all over the world that are buying land for grapes and for hazelnuts because of Turkish, we are in the global marketplace and the hazelnut crops in Turkey have not crashed and so the price for hazelnuts has gone way up. So I know that there's been a lot of change, the climate change also, that I know that farming is changing in that area. What the issue you're talking about is a statewide issue because folks wanna make sure they have the opportunity to continue to farm as they have and it is, it's a changing and dynamic place that we're talking about. It's very dynamic and people are worried about what's gonna happen. I don't know what the future is, but I appreciate you sharing. Sharon, does anybody else have any?
Mr. Mayor, could we, since we have two state political people here, are they going to receive comments that the students make today?
Sure, we can do that.
That would be a good way to set up.
Karen's got the notes, so. I don't have a great answer for you. I don't have a great answer for you, but thank you for bringing that forward. We will pass that on. Okay, who else has something they'd like to share? Somebody down here in the front, or there's somebody back there. Great, there's several people.
Thank you. I live in Monmouth, literally right next to Dutch Brothers, so it's really convenient. My name is Jorge Montzo, and I had a question concerning infrastructure in Flint, Michigan. As I'm sure most of you are aware, about the current crisis in Flint, Michigan concerning lead service lines taking water into residential areas, are there any service lines in either of the towns that are transporting water to us? And if so, what can be done to possibly change them or replace them to something less harmful?
I'm going to look to my city manager, where you, well, Sean Irvine is going to talk about that.
That's a, that's a great question. So, the, it's, what happened in Flint was in part because of the switch of the water types. You know, the pipes, everything was fine until they switched to the river source. That was a more corrosive water that started corroding the pipes, and that's what pulled the lead out. Here in the city of Independence, and I believe city of Monmouth as well, we get all of our water from groundwater sources. We also do test very regularly the amount of land that's in the water system, that's coming out the other end of the pipe, to make sure that we don't have that problem. I think part of what happened in Flint was you had a situation where it wasn't, you know, the various, you know, several cities went bankrupt, there was a state receivership, there was a fairly low chain of command in terms of who's in charge and who needs to be doing what. So I guess what I would say is, here, we do have a very solid system for how things need to operate, what needs to happen to ensure that our systems are not being contaminated in a very thorough testing regimen as well. Every year, there's actually, both cities put out a water report, which has the results of testing of the waters and all the various potential contaminants and what kind of levels were found. So, you know, while I can't say it would never happen here, I think what I can say is that we've got a much more robust system in place than a place like Flint does.
Good question, thank you. There is, isn't there?
So, I'm Cassidy Edwards, I live in Monmouth. As the president of the Gay Street Alliance here at Central High School, I'd like to propose the idea of getting gender-neutral bathrooms within the school and possibly in public buildings because I do know a handful of students here that identify as transgender or not within the gender binary. And I feel that gender-neutral bathrooms would make people feel more comfortable using them rather than using bathrooms that are designated towards male and female.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. We'll make sure to pass that along to the school district also. Thank you. Who's the next person?
Good morning.
My name is Megan Stetson, I live in very rural Monmouth. My question, or more of what's something that I'd like to see in the next ten years is an emergency plan for natural disaster, for any catch, well, casualty disasters such as when that Cascadia earthquake happens. Independence is the last town on this side of Salem where everyone that's coming from the coast, they're going to try and get away when the tsunami is happening over there. Those bridges go down, we're the last town. So I don't know if you guys already had a plan for emergencies?
I'm going to look to Chief Mason to help us out here a little bit.
Absolutely, we have a plan. Our CERT team, thank you very much, our CERT team has put together planning and training for us, community-wide, and they have actually, the CERT team is its own organization, but we manage it through the police department. And they actually have some caches already in place of emergency supplies and kind of hidden about in the community so that it's available in an emergency. But there's always more work that can be done and more involvement that we can get from everyone else at the house residential level so that people are preparing themselves to take care of themselves so those caches might be available for, just as you're saying, the people that end up here that don't really live there, so.
Chief, what should people be thinking about when they're planning for their personal home? As in, you know, what, what should people be thinking about?
Things like water, fresh water, food, medication. Got another big, big one that I missed? Pets are always important, take care of your pets. But we have available resources that people can certainly obtain, provided for free from the city through the CERT team, that give you a full checklist of what you should have in your house.
Chief, you mentioned the organization CERT. Are any of these youngsters available to, or eligible to join CERT and volunteer for that?
They are, and really, I just put it right back to Miss Stetson because there is a CERT team that's student-led, and she is part of that.
Oh, okay.
Patients are happy to get involved in that here.
Did you want to do the commercial right now?
Did you want to do the commercial?
Stand up, there you go, this is your commercial.
So, CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. Sounds kind of very boring, but it's not. It's very something that everyone should look into, and you can join when you're the age of fourteen. And if you don't know what the Cascadia earthquake is, look it up, and hopefully it'll get you interested in joining it and prepare.
As we've seen here today, it doesn't matter how old you are because when big crunches happen, we need everybody to be helpful. So, thank you very much for your work and for all those that volunteered. Who's the next person? Good morning.
Hi, I'm Cassie Lawson, I live in, over in Monmouth. My grandma has MS, and so she has a wheelchair. And earlier, a hotel was mentioned being put in. My grandma's coming to visit this weekend, and she can't get into our house because of her wheelchair. And the closest wheelchair-accessible hotel room is in Salem. And so, it would be nice to see more wheelchair accessibility put into place in Monmouth and Independence. There is one handicap available room at the hotel across the street from Dutch Brothers, and the owner said that he can barely get through his shoulders. So like, a wheelchair's not actually going to fit, there's just going to be a ramp. And so, that would be an interesting and nice thing to see put into place.
Sean, would you like to comment on new code rules and things like that?
Yeah, so, when new developments go in, so for example, this new, this new hotel that gets built, there is the American Disabilities Act that's in place, and that does actually mandate a certain level of handicap accessibility. What you typically find is it's the older places that were built pre-ADA rules that they're very difficult to access. But yeah, I can pretty much guarantee this new place is going to have some wheelchair-accessible rooms. And, you know, have an elevator, it'll have things like that that should make a very accessible structure. And, you know, we do also, as the city is looking at parks infrastructure and things like that, we also do have to take ADA considerations to try to ensure that, you know, we're making all of our developments and infrastructure as accessible as possible.
Thank you. I have lights, so I can't see everybody. Who's the next person? Has somebody in the back, I see? Let somebody else get ready. I'll call you. Good evening, I can barely see you, but...
My name's Adrienne Yettner, and I live in Monmouth. And I have an issue that has been reoccurring, that has like happened several years in a row. It's the flooding that happens over on Gun Club, or every once in a while into like the parking lot at Talmadge. I was wondering if there would be anything we can actually do about that?
I guess, Sean, you're, I guess you're, you're filling in for everybody today, so...
I'm the catch-all guy. I also, I happen to be the floodway manager for the city of Independence. The, you know, you're definitely right, that is a recurring issue. FEMA was actually just out here two days ago. They're doing a risk map analysis process where they're looking at flooding, natural hazard issues in this whole region. And actually, the Gun Club Road Bridge was something I mentioned repeatedly as this is, you know, we know it's an issue, we actually have design construction documents for replacing the bridge, we just need the money to do it. And so, we're working with FEMA trying to get grants and other support to try to rebuild the Gun Club Road Bridge so it doesn't get blocked every year because, of course, not only is it an inconvenience, but some people always end up trying to drag through the water, they get stuck, it's a dangerous situation. So, that definitely is something that's on our radar. I'm not really with the Talmadge Road issue that you're talking about, but I'd be happy to grab you afterwards and get a better idea of what the issue is. But it's, you know, this is kind of like the ADA issue where a lot of it is things that were built many years ago and maybe weren't built to the right standards that we would build them today. And so we have to kind of find the money to go back and fix things as we can.
Okay, who's next? I see some, a lady down here, I've seen a couple people down here. Oh, there's somebody over there, excuse me. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Reba Hoffman, and I live in Independence. Something that kind of bugs me is that we have Western in our community, and I feel like they're not very involved in community things. And I don't know if you guys are doing something about that, or if you've noticed something similar? Or if we could improve that in the next couple of years?
Yes. I know the new, the new president over at West, I spent fifteen years working at Western Argen University, and I know that there is a, the new leadership over there, there's a much greater interest in being involved in both our communities because they now have a local board, it's not at a state level, it's, there's local people on the local board. So I know that there's some efforts there. I think we have some economic efforts that are connected up.
Yeah, and it's, this is kind of a, it's a big organization, you know, it's a lot, it's about finding the right people to work with. I know we have had a lot of volunteer support from Blue students. For example, there was a fraternity that came and helped spread wood chips down by the dog park a few months ago. We're talking to another one about doing a similar project with the ball fields. So, you know, we definitely are kind of having ongoing conversations like that. As with a lot of those kind of situations, it's kind of hit or miss. The, their bonding professor actually came and did a street tree inventory for us. So, you know, it's, there is a, we are working on getting them more engaged. It has historically not been a real solid connection. I feel like we are moving more towards that way. And in fact, a lot of the innovation stuff I was talking about earlier, we're now starting to talk to Western about how they can partner with the K-12 system here in Independence and Monmouth to really help engage some of that.
Counselor Morton?
And I sit on a couple of committees that involve both the president and his wife. And both of them are very, very community-minded, and he particularly is intent on reaching out to the communities and being involved, and recognizes that that has not been the case in years past.
Please.
I, I sit on a committee also, I sit on the Western Days Commission. And this past year, the marketing department at Western Argen University has sent over students that have been working with our committee on our social media plan, putting together a media kit. So there's a lot, there's a lot more involved, recently, five Western Argen students than I've seen in the past.
So if they can head in the right direction. Other comments? Okay, who's the next person?
Okay. Hi, my name is Zach Corey, and I live in Independence. So my question is regarding a thing that has kind of been a pain for all of us high schoolers these past few years, and that would be the grading system. So... My question is, how much say do you have in what the school does with their grading system? So, what can we do to change it? Because, let's face it, it sucks.
Well, I think that's an example of clear communication. The city of Independence and the city of Monmouth are not directly responsible for schools. There's a school board that's separately elected that oversees the activities of the school, of the central school district. And so they're the people who have the power to make, to provide input to the superintendent, provides input to the, to the principal, and the faculty, and staff. So, they're the people who handle grading. Now, I will tell...
And they meet the first Monday of every month at six-thirty at the school district.
That was the first Monday of every month?
So there's one coming up.
There you go. And so, but now, while we don't have control over everything, we do have the opportunity to communicate with the school district. Like, we will share information with them about our economic development efforts, and how important that is, and how the school fits in as an important part of our economic development efforts. Because as you can tell, there's lots of people interested in coming to our community, and schools are a very important factor in people deciding where they would like to live and where they would like to do their business. And so this is a very important issue. And so while we don't have control, we do communicate, and it is really important. This one, town, this one, council, this one? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to move to the next lady. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Sam Sackett, I live in Monmouth. And I just want to bring up the idea of getting playground equipment that's good for children with special needs. I know a lot of public parks don't have swings that are wheelchair-accessible, or aren't, they're not able for like, kids my size or larger with special needs to be able to strap, be strapped into a safe swing so that they can also play and go take playgrounds. And I also like the idea of getting carts in stores which are safe for kids with special needs that are larger, they have a larger seat, and are strapped in. That's just safe, and that way, like, if a mother needs to take her special needs kid to the grocery store, she doesn't have to push a wheelchair and push a cart. Just making it easier, and I feel like that'd be a good blessing for someone with kids with special needs.
Thank you. I know that our Parks Commission is interested in making our parks accessible, and it gets down to dollars and cents here, but thank you for sharing that. I know that staff is going to take that to our Parks Commission. And I know we have several representatives on this council that work with a number of the local business folks. And I'm sure they'll pass, pass those on. Thank, thank you, I really appreciate that comment. Who's the next person? Good morning.
I'm Renee Bruning, and I live in Independence. And I would like to reference back to your original question about what I'd like to see in Independence in ten years. In ten years, I would like to see the concrete building that's across from the library develop or destroy. I know it's been privately owned for a long time, it's been an eyesore for my entire life.
You know, I, yes. I, I will, I will tell you that the, the reason council's smiling is because if we had a dollar for each time somebody's at, and I, I'm not chastising them, just, we could all go to feet, all of us.
We could have bought the building.
That's true. So, do you want to give an update on where, what, where the situation is with Independence Station? As, and since it is a private, so, what our limitations are, go ahead.
So, yeah, the short answer is, the city actually did foreclose on that building several years ago. It took a long time to run through the courts. Unfortunately, he paid us off right before we were going to get the building. To do that, he had to take out a loan from kind of one-step-shore, equito, and knee-breaker type people. And the, that has now more or less come due to the guidance, so he's actually got it off the market for sale. The plan is essentially, he put it on the market for a certain price that was rather high. And, but he's dropping it ten percent every six months until it sells. So, it's unfortunately not, there's not a, there's not a set, you know, this is the endpoint, but at least we can be reasonably assured that sometime in the next couple, three years, it'll, you know, it'll get to a point where somebody's going to snap it up. Because we have actually gotten several calls from companies that are interested in the building, they like the building, they do things like take those buildings and finish them. But it's just too, it's too expensive right now.
But we get it. We, we really do get it. I think the current price is two-point-three million dollars. Next, who's our next person? See, this is what's more fun, we really look, you know, while the reports are interesting, this is what we really come for, is to hear your thoughts, and your questions, and your opinions. And I know with a hundred and sixty people in the room, there's more opinions out there. Who has one? On Facebook. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Nathan Beard, I live in Independence. And one thing I've noticed especially lately is that on the back roads on Seventh Street and South Sixth, where I live especially, people tend to park large trucks on both sides of the road in front of their houses, and it makes it all... And it makes it almost impossible for one vehicle, let alone two, to pass side by side. So, I was wondering if there's any way that we can try and prevent that from happening in the future? If you guys have any plans regarding that?
Well, as Chief Mason comes up here because he can probably answer that, are they just regular trucks or like semi-trucks or...
There are some places where they're just regular trucks and that's enough to do it. But often, there's a plumbing truck in particular that is parked in front of houses. And several, not semis, but the big box trucks, like you would see a U-Haul as a good example.
Chief?
It sounds like what you're, excuse me, it sounds like what you're describing may not be illegal if they're normal trucks and they're moving every day. So, 6th and 7th Street both are pretty narrow. And the only real solution to that would be that there was an established no parking zone on one or the other side of that street, kind of like 4th Street. So, you'll note that all the way down on the west side of 4th Street, there's no parking and that allows two vehicles to pass a lot, a lot safer, I guess, and not have to slow down and maneuver around the gaps. I don't know that there has been any interest in that from the community. Sometimes the people that live in those neighborhoods don't really want to lose their street-side parking because it affects their ability to park near their home. And it also, quite honestly, when you make it easier for two cars to pass, tends to drive speeds up some because people feel safer driving faster. So, I don't really have a good solution. I'm just kind of laying out the foundation of where it is and why it is the way it is. If those people in those neighborhoods or other groups wanted to pursue or have the city pursue and look at no parking on one or the other side of the street, the appropriate mechanism for that would be to come to a traffic safety commission meeting. That's who brings to the council traffic safety concerns. And it sounds like what you're describing to me is traffic safety concern. One of your central high school students actually sits on the Traffic Safety Commission, Marcos Sadio. He comes to those meetings or you can come yourself, which would be great. And those are listed on our website when those meetings take place. But action like that is generally driven from the community through the Traffic Safety Commission to the council to have action.
The other suggestion I might make, sometimes people don't know that it's a problem. And a neighbor walked up and knocked on the door and said, hey, I've got a problem. Can we find a way? That usually is, that's a wonderful way to start because most of the times, most people want to make things copacetic in their, in their neighborhood. So, I just suggest somebody will walk up and talk to the person, say, hey, can you help us out? We're having a little bit of a problem. Maybe move in here or what's the drive-by? Usually that's, you know, taking, taking the problem, talking to the people directly with it. It's usually the best way to take care of stuff. You folks know that. That's the way you take care of things every day. So, I, there's somebody else out there. We have time for just a couple more. The light's pretty bright, so I have a lot of trouble seeing folks. Are there others out there? It's your whole stuff. I can't even see you. Right here. Oh, there you are. You're small and retiring. I was standing sideways. That was not the day.
Hi there. My name's Will Bates. I live in Independence. And I was wondering, as the town gets larger and more people come in, how are we going to cope with, like, having amenities? Like, I know there are smaller towns than us who have, like, bigger corporations such as Safeway or like other larger things. And we don't have that in this town. And so, it makes it very difficult to, if we need just, you know, bulk items, we have to travel long distances and whatnot. When our town is growing in size and it's not necessarily the biggest town, but we do not have a lot of the larger businesses that may serve our needs.
Sure. So, I mean, I think that's something, I think that's something that, you know, it's, you know, as a city, we're always kind of balancing the line between trying to incentivize something and then also letting the free market do what it does. You know, a lot of times, communities that are smaller than ours, they do have some of these things. They, in many times, can be a little more isolated because you have to drive farther to find those things. So, these businesses, they all, they've kind of got a system for where they, where they locate, where they look, and it has to do with demographics. It has to do with population. It has to do with what else is in, you know, a certain distance of that existing community. And so, I guess, you know, the short answer is so far, that just hasn't played to our benefit. You know, I think, yeah, if we do continue to grow, you know, that will, you know, will cross some lines for some companies that will start looking at us. You know, frankly, with this hotel that we've been talking to, it's been a three-year effort that we've been working on trying to get a decent lodging into the community because we think there really is a demand, but we don't fit the profile. And so, it's a real job convincing folks that, yes, this is something that can work. So, that, I think, you know, I unfortunately don't have a great answer for you, but it's, you know, it's something that we are kind of continuing to go out there and talk to people. And I think we'll kind of progress as the community progresses.
So, what you're describing is kind of a two-way sword. There's an upside to it, obviously, in being able to get to the amenities, the things that you want to purchase. But there's a downside to it that's very real as well. The City of Corvallis has dealt with that in the past by passing ordinances that kept out Walmart, for instance. And they did that to preserve their downtown core. And they've done that quite successfully. They've allowed some big box development that's provided the types of services and goods that you're describing without sacrificing their downtown core. But we've seen examples where that type of planning and preservation hasn't worked out that way. We've got a neighboring community of Dallas, for instance, that allowed Walmart and a Safeway to come in. And we lost, there were grocery stores, there was a grocery store downtown Dallas that went away. There were a lot of other businesses that closed up and they've struggled for a couple of decades now to try to bring back the downtown core. So, if we're going to allow that type of development to move forward, we've got to do it in a way that protects and preserves the downtown amenities that we already have that we don't want to lose either. So, it's a, it's a difficult thing that you're describing.
Last question. Well, it might be a pretty good segue to talk about the Taco Bell idea. Just, could you explain your role, the city council's role, and it happens every year? We need Taco Bell. So... And you say it just like that. We need Taco Bell. What's your role in bringing businesses in to the area? I mean, how do you guys do that? Want to talk about what our efforts are and then we'll add, and then we'll add in. And the humorous part, I would say, is that in the 12 years, this is our 12th year doing this, every year, we've heard about a Taco Bell. And I knew what you guys were thinking. No, you got to bet your rights, the staff are getting older. They used to be students, now they're staff. Please, Shaun.
So, yeah, with regard to business development, for a smaller community like us, it can be a little difficult because to actually go out and recruit a business, to say, hey, we want this type of business to come here, it takes a lot of time and effort. So, for the most part, what we've done is focused on building our infrastructure, building our existing assets, working with the companies that are already here that we know want to be here and helping them grow because that's, that's sort of the low-hanging fruit. In terms of the recruitment side, we have tended to more just pick the one or two targets that we think really, really makes sense. So, for example, a hotel, that's something that can have a major, major impact on the community. The call center that opened up, that was something that we knew would have a significant impact on the community. You know, for the smaller thing, for the smaller things like a, like a fast food restaurant, again, that's something where we have chosen essentially to let the market take its course. In terms of the role that we play and the way that we do it, a lot of it is just kind of old-fashioned cold-calling and door-docking. You learn about the industry. You say, what do you guys need, you know, in terms of a place to operate? What do you look for? You know, I was saying that these places have these profiles of what they're looking for. You know, so, you know, McDonald's and Taco Bell, those guys, they might say, well, we need a minimum population of X and we need a median family income or household income of Y and we need a location of this many square feet and this many vehicles passing by per day, you know, in XYZ. So, you know, that's kind of where you have to do that, you know, with the recruitment game. You figure out what they need and do, can't we, can't we offer that? You know, honestly, I don't know the answer for a Taco Bell. But again, that's kind of the, the role that we play is more of a, you know, learning what they need, saying, do we fit that profile? And then going out and talking to them, saying, hey, we think we fit your profile. We need to be good for the community. You know, we, we aren't in a position, though, a lot of communities around the country can offer incentives and things like that for these big manufacturers. We don't have as many of the same incentives, but we're a good place to work. We've got a great education system. We've got a trained workforce. You know, that's really important, an important skill to be able to offer as well.
Let me give you some numbers. I just looked this up knowing that this was coming up. For you to have a Taco Bell, you need $750,000 in liquid assets personally. I just lost my... You need $1.5 million available. It's $45,000 to just buy the franchise fee because it's going to cost you $1.25 million for construction. That's for a Taco Bell. And so, what, so what it does is they're taking a look at what the mix would be. You know, it's a business decision and, you know, CERT talks about, you know, works with lots of business people on that. So, they have to see that they're going to be able to make, to make money and make money at a, at a... Smaller communities is a little bit more challenging. And so, so our role is, as Shaun was talking about, is that if people want to be here, we, you know, we will generally embrace, embrace businesses. But we're not out, we're looking for the kinds of places that hire lots of folks. Industry, you know, we helped bring LK here and we worked really hard to recruit them a number of years ago. But that's almost on the order of 200 jobs, 200 family wage jobs. So, you know, there's, there's all sorts of different kinds of... Does that answer the question that you're looking for, Mr. Wilson? Thank you. I feel like we're at an end and I want to just kind of make a couple of closing comments if I, if I could. Go ahead and make a plug.
So, we, as a city, are always looking for more volunteers. Everything that's happened in Independence, almost everything that's happened in Independence has happened with the assistance of, in many cases, because of community volunteers. I have here a city volunteer application stack. If anybody is interested in being a volunteer, the libraries, the museum, in our parks, there's a lot of different opportunities. And like I said, you look around this community, the dog park was built entirely by volunteers with some help from our labor workers department. You know, there's the playgrounds, the last two playgrounds that were built in this community were built by volunteers. There's a lot of great opportunities to get involved in your community and really make a difference. So, if you're interested, please grab one of these forms, fill it out, and let us know.
Are there, please?
You heard the GM of Minnet mentioned that there is a Home Based and Small Business Fair on May 20th and it's held in downtown Independence. If you are thinking of starting a business, if you have started a business, if your parents have a business running out of their home, it would be a great place to pick up some new information and to look at what other small businesses in the area are doing. And Minnet is partnering along with several other groups, including Merit, which is Mr. Peck's business. And I think it will be very informative if you're interested in that kind of thing.
Other council members? Let me just make a couple of closing comments. We really like coming and doing this and we're glad that you, that 160 people filled the room today to do this. You know a little bit more about your community. We know a little bit more about some of the things that you're thinking about. Because in a few years, some of you are going to be sitting here, either in this community, in our neighboring city Monmouth or some other place because you never know where you're going to land. But I want to encourage you to be involved in your community because it's the people who get involved, whether it's your schools, churches, or nonprofits, or just being involved in something beside yourself. You guys, folks, you get to make the decisions. You get to decide where things are going. Some people just let it happen to them. Well, we're in a community that people who are interested have been able to be involved and make a difference. So, as you graduate, you know, many of you are going to go to college. They're going to go, many of you are going to go to work. Some of you are going to go to the military. But at some point, you're going to be living in a small, in a small community, a large community. Be involved because you can make the difference. I really appreciate the opportunity to, for us to have brought our council to you. Thank you for being here. If there's no other business?
No, dear.
All of them, if you could, say aye. And of course, motion carries. Thank you very much.